It being 6:30, I'm going to call this meeting in the Westminster Select Board to order. Any adjustments to the agenda?
I have none.
Acceptance of the minutes of the meeting of June 24th? Put them over.
All approval of the minutes is written.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the meeting of June 24th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They are adopted. Communications and public comments.
Push the button, Ally, yep. That's it, okay. The polls are open on August 11th for the primary. The card that was sent out was from the state for your absentee ballot. By statute, the polls have to be open, so we're open from 10 to 7 at the Westminster Institute on August 11th, and on November 3rd, the polls will be open as well, even though they'll be sending ballots out, okay? Inside the Institute, yep.
Toby, push your mic.
Just asking if it was going to be inside the building, and Ally said yes.
So, stagger people in if we have to.
Thank you. Any other public comments at this time? All right, on the unfinished business, construction of Henwood Hill, update?
We have no new information at this time.
North Westminster Community House?
We have no more information for this meeting.
Oh, that's a fair, okay, thank you. Savage gravel pit?
The only update is, we're doing more testing tomorrow. We had to change methods because of the cobbles that are in the sand and the gravels.
What did you call them, cobbles?
Cobblestones.
Oh, cobblestones, yep, okay.
So, we're trying a different bit to get deeper and give us a better, full range of sample.
Do you think we'll have sample results by the next meeting, maybe?
I would, yes, I would hope so.
Okay, thank you. Well, that was quick. New business. Petition from Kimball Hill, Kimball Hill Road South, motorized vehicle restrictions. Do you want us to give the update on that, or do you want me to?
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
I received two petitions, you've got them as A and B in your packets. Martha Mitchell was the one, the contact person for Kimball Hill Road South, and in your packets, you have the letter she wrote, and I would hope somebody's here to speak on it? No. Okay, so, do we read the letter?
Uh, yeah, I guess we'll... Or the petition. Please read the petition. So, we're on Kimball Hill, Kimball Hill Road South? Well, I'll read the whole thing, never mind.
I think we also ought to...
Read the letter.
We ought to define the rules for the petitions before we get started on this.
Uh, well, the rules are, we're going to do... Hear any opinions, comments on both of these petitions? Then, we're going to get some legal counsel, legal opinion on whether to close these to motorized vehicles. We might do a site visit, not sure, and then we'll take action at a later meeting. I'll read them anyway. So, this is the petition for, here's the petition for Kimball Hill Road South. "The undersigned landowners and residents of Kimball Hill Road South request motorized vehicle access restricted beyond the end of the drivable section of Kimball Hill Road South past the last two driveways, 1252 and 1253, and signage stating 'no motorized vehicles.' This is intended as a safety measure, not to prohibit future repair, restoration, improvement, or maintenance of the road beyond that point. Construction and use, construction and use of a larger turnaround or parking area or access by landowners to their property beyond this point." There are 18 signatures to the petition. And I'll read Martha's letter, Martha Mitchell. "Dear Mr. Hodgkins enclosed, please find a petition signed by landowners and residents of Kimball Hill Road South requesting no motorized vehicle signage at the dead end of the road. According to old timers and local lore, the bridge over the stream between what are now called Kimball Hill Road South and Kimball Hill Road North washed out in the 1938 hurricane. The Class 4 section of Kimball Hill Road South is steep with a slope of 15% to 20%. In the center of the old road is eroded three, twelve, or four feet deeper than the original road surface in places. Over the past several decades, abutting landowners have attempted to reduce erosion by filling the gullies with branches and planting native vegetation. Erosion on this section of the road and the already steep stream crossing were expanded and made steeper by Hurricane Irene in 2011. Since Irene, several large 12-inch DBH diameter or greater trees have fallen across the road. There is no cell phone coverage in this area. If someone was hurt or got their vehicle stuck traveling down the Class 4 stretch of road, the nearest help would be from the nearest house, which happens to be mine, about .3 tenths of a mile up the road. Many years ago, it was necessary to use a chainsaw to help a pair of hunters stranded less than 100 feet down the road from the dead end. Folks who walk or carry their bikes down the stretch of road will tell you, no motorized vehicles have gone through in a long, in a long time. It would not be safe. On Monday, June 15th, 2020, eight large road motorcycles, not dirt bikes, drove around the markers at the dead end of the road and down the hill. One of the motorcycles had Vermont plates, the others were from Massachusetts and New York. To reach the stream crossing, they wove around the gullies and moved some of the materials to reduce overland water flow and further erosion. At the steam cross, at the stream crossing, I watched as the men moved boulders, some as big as two by three feet, and stones in the way of getting their motorcycles across. Three or four of the men then pushed while another drove the fishtailing bikes down one slope and up the other, leaving deeper ruts with each passing. After watching three bikes helped across, I left. Fortunately, as far as I know, no one was hurt. While gathering signatures, five of the households who signed also mentioned hearing and/or seeing the motorcycles speed down the road. No one heard them return and all wondered where they had gone. It is our hope that signage restricting motorized vehicles would help control erosion, prevent damage to vehicles, and reduce the likelihood of injury to anyone attempting to drive this section of Kimball Hill Road South, and keep the area open for the folks from both ends of the road who use the road gently. Thank you for considering our requests and sharing our concerns with the Select Board. We look forward to hearing your decisions soon. Kindly Martha Mitchell." Comments, suggestions? Yes, yes, please come up to the mic, state your name, and tell us what you know.
My name's Robert Feinberg. I live in Westminster West, and I am one of the local motorcyclists who use these trails fairly commonly. The group that came through there was not a group that I know of, and it sounds like they were just some random guys that showed up. I talked with Martha at length about this whole situation. I am in the process of developing a Southern Vermont Riders Club, and part of our mission would be to do trail maintenance and try to keep some of our riding, local riding, open for us. We go through there quite often, actually, on motorbikes, small dirt bike, enduro-type bikes, and we've never had a problem through there. It is pretty gnarly terrain. I wouldn't recommend it for big adventure bikes, or certainly not four-wheel or ATVs. But it is, you know, a route that we use to get from Westminster West Side to the Saxon River area rather than going on the main paved roads. I talked to Martha about this, and I said, you know, we'd be more than happy to do trail maintenance on it, to do erosion control, and to fix whatever needs to be fixed in order to keep that open as a local thing. I know that, you know, her main thing was really safety in that area. There's nothing I can do about that. I mean, if someone's going to get hurt down there, they're going to come up to the house. Yeah, there is no cell phone coverage, there's no other way to get help at that point. All I can say is, I don't know if that's ever happened, except for the hunters that she mentioned. We've been using that trail for almost 10 years without any problems whatsoever, and people really don't even know we go through there because we kind of pop up to it, go down it, go through it, and we're done. So, we don't mess around. It's just a thoroughfare for us. So, that's my only comment.
I'm assuming that you would not be in favor of having the road closed to motorized vehicles?
No, no. I mean, I think, you know, the guys that use it locally, most of us are pretty responsible riders. We don't tear it up, you know, we understand, we go through neighborhoods very slowly. One example of that is that we've worked out a deal with the people on Cotting Road, Town Farm Road. They were upset that people were going through there too fast, so we talked with the local people that live there, and we, they put up 15 mile an hour signs, and now we all abide by the 15 mile an hour speed limit, and everyone's happy, everyone coexists. So, I think that a lot of this has, was spurred, and I think we'll talk about that later when we talk about...
Windmill?
Windmill Hill. There is a national group that created a route, an off-road and back-road adventure route, and they published it on their website.
Oh.
And it goes through New York into Vermont, through Vermont, up through New Hampshire, and then to the Canadian border. And they didn't really do any recon, they just published this route, and then we had the incidents on Windmill Hill. They did get word of it, and within days, they published in their, on their website, "Do not go there anymore." They took it off of their maps. None of their members are encouraged to go there, they're discouraged from doing it. I've been doing a little survey for the last couple of weeks, because they all come down through past my house almost all the time, and they congregate right in West West Village before they take off, and I've been stopping them and asking, "Have you guys gone through there?" And they said, "No, DDR does not want us to go through there anymore." So, I think they're being as responsible as they can, being from out of state. So, anyways, I think the two incidences are kind of connected, but also not connected.
Yeah.
I don't know where these street bike guys came from. She said they were on Harleys, and I was just like, can't imagine that. So, anyways, so, that's the deal.
Yep, thank you. Do we want to discuss this, or go to Windmill Hill South and sort of treat these as one? I mean, I for one would like to, you know, talk to Larry about this too, before we actually make a decision. Opinions? Suggestions? No? Okay, well, we'll go to Windmill Hill South then. Let's see, okay, I'll read this as well. "Petition to the Westminster Select Board to classify Windmill Hill Road Legal Trail as non-motorized. We, the undersigned residents of Windmill Hill Road South and Windmill Hill Road North in Westminster, Vermont, are seeking to have the legal trail between our roads designated as non-motorized. During the past several months, we have observed a significant increase in motorized travel across the trail, including groups of up to 10 motorized vehicles, with occasionally as many as five groups per day traversing the trail. Noise pollution and erosion resulting from this surge of use are the primary reasons we are submitting this petition for your attention." Details. "Beginning at the end of the town-maintained WHRS, Windmill Hill Road South, a short privately maintained section of Class 4 road leads north to the southern terminus of the trail. The southern section of the trail climbs on an eroded former road grade with approximately 150 yards of loose rocks, culminating with a large rock step that often requires several attempts for the vehicles to ascend. For the fully loaded dual-sport motorcycles, these pose challenges to the riders that frequently cause them to congregate at the beginning of the trail, engines running as they proceed one at a time through the sections. The noise from idling engines and shouting over the noise are noted by several nearby households. The town ordinance states noise levels shall not exceed 70 dB, light traffic registers as 50 dB, motorcycles register as 100 dB." Decibels, something. "The increased motorized traffic has also damaged the trail service and caused, surface and caused trail widening. Rocks and the sparse soils have been churned up by the motor vehicles making travel on foot and bicycle hazardous in places, and elevating erosion problems on the trail that privately maintain Class 4 road and Windmill Hill Road South. This erosion can result in costly road repairs for the impacted property owners and at times the town of Westminster. The other section of impacted trail is approximately 1/4 mile south of the rock, north of the rock step. To the west of the trail is a vernal pool that, when water tables are high, drains north and flows along the former road grade, eventually exiting east against an old culvert. While foot and bicycle traffic can avoid the wet spots throughout the year, the motorized vehicles push straight through, carving deep ruts and making the runoff turbid, increasing sediment loads to the headwaters streams of the Sackets Brook watershed. The vernal pool and its animal species are impacted by the noise and vibrations of the passing motor vehicles. Classifying the trail as non-motorized could also reduce potential collisions and accidents from through traffic. A collective count in the past two weeks, June 22 to July 6, averaged at least 10 vehicles per day, which means about 300 more vehicles on the roads per month during the riding season. Lower adverse impacts to rare or uncommon plant species found along the legal trail, see Town Natural Resources map as a URL. Diminished adverse impacts to the significant wildlife habitat areas that run the length of the town's western boundary, which, since 2009, has been zoned as a natural resource district. Enhance the aesthetic experience for bicyclists and pedestrians/hikers. We applaud the recently placed dead-end sign at the Putney-Westminster Town Line on Windmill Hill Road South, as this will help reduce the number of turnarounds as vehicles attempt to reach Windmill Hill Road North, only to find a non-navigable path through the forest. The descriptions we have provided in this petition are based primarily on the perspective of the residents along Windmill Hill Road South, where the motorized vehicles face technical challenges and cause the listed issues. A copy of this petition, including an invitation for feedback, has been shared with all residents of Windmill Hill Road South and North on the Grand List for Westminster, Vermont, FY 2019 and 2020. And there are five signatures on this petition."
You only got the one page?
Oh, I only got the one page. Okay, so, there are, how many did you say, 20?
23.
23, excuse me, 23 signatures. Yes.
Windmill Hill?
What did I say?
Windmill.
Oh, right, of course. Fix that, Windmill. Thank you. Would anyone like to speak to this issue? Please come to the mic.
Can you pass the map to the board president?
Uh, yes, please do.
I have one already.
Yeah, there you go.
My name is Janice Shalou. I'm a resident of Westminster. I live on the very end of Windmill Hill Road South, so my property is right next to where the, the trail starts. I want to be very clear that we are really different than Kimball Hill Road South, Kimball, yeah, Kimball Hill Road South, because we are a trail, we're a legal trail. We are not a Class 4 road. The road in question is a legal trail with different, different, you know, regulations about it. You have read the petition. I just provided this map to give you an idea of where the location is, and the area in question is the dotted line, which makes it a legal trail, which is actually one of the problems that shows up on Google Maps and people's GPS systems. I just want to emphasize, we're not against motorcycles, we are not against ATVs. I have one of each. My neighbor has a motorcycle. We're avid fans, so I just want to be real clear about that. The thing that has happened is, and the other gentleman was talking about it, is the backcountry and adventure motorcycle routes are trending, they're becoming extremely popular. They especially started up during the pandemic because people could go out and ride and be off the roads and not be out in public, but it has become very, very popular across the entire United States, and these riders are very passionate about going on the backroads. I think one thing they don't understand, however, is that most of Vermont is a dirt road. It's not asphalt, and it has very different features of riding on it. I truly believe that the motorcycle traffic will continue to increase up and down the road if the trail classification is not expanded to exclude motorized vehicles on the legal trail between Windmill Hill Road South and North. The gentleman is correct, we did contact backcountry discovery routes about the situation, and with confirmation from the town office, they have cooperated by rerouting the New England trip. However, there are many other such sites that are online that do not know this. This route is considered, considered a thoroughfare on both Google Maps and GPS, and we've had people from this organization who, yes, they read the website, and then they're on the road, and they pop it into their GPS, and it says, "You can go through," and we've had people, we've had to stop them and say, "Aren't you, don't you know you really can't?" And they're like, "Oh, yeah, we're a member, yeah, and oh, it says we can go through." So, it is a ongoing battle, but it shows it as a usable public route, not only for motorcycles but for cars, and we've had a few of them try to get up over this too, much to their dismay. It's going to be a constant battle to keep the flows down if we have to deal with each website and biker organization individually. On July 4th of this year, we had almost 50 motorcycles in three days, individually and in groups of four or five, and sometimes more than that. There was a tour group from outer state, what we've seen mostly is New York, New Jersey, Connecticut. These groups are not from Vermont, they are tour groups, they sign up, and they go on these rides. There were nine riders in one group, there were two ATVs, five trail bikes, two regular motorcycles. They stopped for about 20 minutes, realized what they were running into, stood beside their bikes, yelling to each other, trying to figure out how to get up the trail, sending people up and down the trail, revving their bikes the whole time, and standing in my neighbor's driveway throughout this procedure. It was pretty loud, and it went on for quite a while. So, I just, enough about that. My biggest concern, I think, of many people in my neighborhood is the impacts to the town. There are neighbors who live, they privately maintain part of this because it's their driveway, and they spend a lot of money making sure that it is graded properly. They have worked on installing like stormwater diversion swales along to try and divert the stormwater so it doesn't rush down our road. These swales have been destroyed by the motorcycle traffic. It has played a key role in reducing the stormwater runoff and erosion alongside of Windmill Hill Road South down to the Beaver Pond. We have tried to work with the town about this also because of our concern, the road, it's a tough road. We're infamous during mud season. It is not anyone's favorite road, but when the rainwater comes down, it can really carve out the road, and we've worked to put more ditching along the sides to divert the rain water. Many of us have installed ditches in our driveways to divert the water so it doesn't go onto the road. So, this is, this is near and dear to us also, because that area is now really becoming a flow-through. The water goes faster and goes right down the road. We have also been concerned about motorcycles traveling at high speeds, not understanding that there are other cars, walkers, and dogs and children on the road. There are some very sharp turns. My neighbor's grandson lives on one of those sharp turns, and he rides his bike, he's less than 1/4 mile from this trail. Very concerning.
How long, excuse me, how long is that section?
The trail itself?
Yes. Less than a mile.
Yeah. Sorry. Yeah, thank you. Okay, go ahead. Um, let's see. And we have had people get quite belligerent when we tell them, "Look, you really can't get through here." And they've said, "I can go if I want to," and they've gone. And so, it's, it's been a little scary. I'm not actually a big guy. The trail is located in Resources Conservation Area. Our wetland areas are being degraded, vernal pools are being impacted, there are very large muddy ruts in the road, they've expanded the trail boundaries, there are water quality issues, and it's, it's, we're at the headwaters of the Sackets Brook, so, you know, that's another thing. It's becoming harder to drive on, to walk on. They've really chewed it up, it's amazing. The big rocks are now getting pushed off and becoming little tiny rocks, and cyclists and walkers are having a hard time. It's becoming dangerous for them, for the non-motorized traffic. I think those are my main points. I would be happy to answer any questions. Todd, do you want to say anything?
I will.
Okay. Is there any questions I can answer for you?
When you said, when you said that you spoke with the outfit that is doing this, and they understood, were they willing to remove it from the plan?
They, yes, they were very cooperative. They immediately rerouted it. They rerouted it to Black Locust Road, which is a Class 4.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a main road, but they told their members, and they put a big note on their website.
Well, I, I thought that's what I heard you say, and so, has that solved the problem?
We still have people going up the hill. Today, we had several go by over the last several days. I've had, there've been several going through. Today, there was a really loud motorcycle going through.
Which?
Today.
Of what kind of motorcycle?
A very loud, a large motorcycle.
Was it for a local person?
I don't think so.
Okay.
The problem is, folks, is that this is just one organization of many. This place is based down on the West Coast, and there are multiple organizations. Again, if you, if you pop in this area on Google Maps or GPS, it says it's a public road, it says it's fine, it says your car can drive through.
You can't.
We get cars coming up all the time. The good thing is, Putney has put in "no through road" at the beginning, but it's very tiny. And thank heavens, Westminster now has a big road that says, big sign says "Dead End." People still come up. So, I'm just letting you know, it's, I don't think talking to this one organization will stop it. There's still other organizations, there's still the issue of people thinking they can get through because their GPS and their Google Maps says they can't. And there are also people who are going to come no matter what because they feel like they have a right. So, I'm just, I think it'd be best for everyone involved, especially the town, maintenance crews, and the town, because it's going to, it's going to cost you money. And we'll do whatever we can to help with erosion, but we can't if it's just going to keep happening. So, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Russ, what is the maintenance that we do on the trail?
We, we do the maintenance of, for the summertime, and we hire Putney to do our plowing for us in the winter for that section of the road.
So, it's plowed?
But it is plowed right up to the end of the town road that is travelable.
Not the trail?
Not the trail, no.
Right.
It stops right at the driveway.
But the rest of the road obviously is maintained. Okay.
I'm Todd Eastman, or Thomas Eastman, and I live on Windmill Hill Road South in the town of Westminster. I just want to discuss the surface of the trail, my concern. I don't live right at the end there, but I use that trail constantly to get access for hiking, running, bicycling of all varieties across there. And the surface is no longer friendly for hiking or biking at this point. The surface is chewed up with a lot of loose cobbles, it's a little hazardous, and we are part of an area where a lot of non-highly skilled bikers, bicyclists like to come through, and it's pretty challenging for them to get around the rock steps, the bigger bikes that are doing these tours, they're dual-sport bikes, heavily loaded for camping, they have to juice, they have to use the throttle to get up these trails, and it does chew them up. To get around the rock step, there's multiple routes through it, straight through, left of it, right of it, but that gets eaten out, and it starts to cut into the forest on the edges there. edges there. This is not sustainable as I see it right now, that if the road is to be maintained as open for motorized vehicles, we don't stop somebody because they have license plates from another state. It's open to everybody, and it's important that either be open or closed to motorized vehicles. People have, everybody who's coming through there has every right in the world to be doing it currently, but that is becoming the problem. And it's, it's a very attractive tour these guys are doing. I mean, give me a couple of weeks and some time off, and I'll, it looks like a lot of fun. But for the people traveling the route, it's one little bit of a very long journey for them. And for those of us that live along there, it's, it's our backyard, it's where we live. So I want to make that point clear.
Thank you.
So, any questions? Any glad to answer?
Question?
Yes.
This is working. I'm Kevin Hughes. Thank you for coming and giving us your concern. I'm more concerned, since it is citizens' property, are you concerned, is there a conflict that creates a public safety issue with hikers, bicyclers, walkers, people with their dogs sharing the trail when these bicycle saddle, saddle things are rolling? Are you saying that there's a increased chance of conflict between the two and people getting hurt?
Let me answer that. I don't think conflict as an impact or running into each other, no.
Okay.
But I think there are user conflicts. You know, that people have different interests of why they go into the woods.
Sure.
And why they're doing things. The increased noise is a factor. But most of the riders are great folks. Most of the riders are quite good people, and they're, they're willing, they want to stop and talk, and when they fall over on their bikes, you know, if I'm there, I'll help them get back up. I mean, these are just normal people on vacation.
Sure.
But it, it makes it stressful for the people living in that area.
Sure, and maybe I didn't word it effectively. Is that anxiety lifted because you have a public, you have a concern for your safety and well-being when you want to use that area to walk, hike, use your dog, maybe bicycle? And there's an encroachment because these people are using these paths at the exact same time? Or, as your prior speaker said very eloquently, is this more a functionality of a limited area with a much higher velocity of utilization, using obviously machines that are doing damage not only to the general safety of the paths, but also, you know, a more expansive part? You mentioned water runoff and other facilities that are being damaged, the general environment. I'm trying to understand that, you know, what we're trying to accomplish here.
We're trying to accomplish, we would like to have the trail, the legal trail reclassified to non-motorized.
Okay.
For the purpose of conserving the resource, which is the trail and the surrounding woods, and to deal with the issue of increased noise.
Okay.
In this area. There is a significant increase of traffic on the road coming through, but currently they're within all rights to be there. If it's classified as non-motorized, it impacts the local riders, but we don't see any alternative to that currently.
And I'll just close by saying, based on what you've told me, what I've heard so far, there doesn't seem to be a heightened risk to public safe, safety, at least at this point, considering everyone is able to, there's enough room to utilize the trail for everybody. Am I correct in that assumption?
That...
Whoa.
You cannot have bikes, motorcycles coming through the narrow parts of the trail while people are hiking, so people step out of the way, move back and forth.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes. You would, you, it's not compatible use in that regard, having both user groups.
Have there been any injuries?
There have not been any injuries from that. But there is a potential for that.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Yep, come on up, yep.
My name is Heather Taylor. I live at the end of the road there. And I do a lot of walking with my dog on the road, and I do a lot of walking on the trail and through the sugar bush and the pinnacle lands, Dan Crocker's sugar bush. And there was an incident of people coming down the trail and being really hyper-focused on the terrain in front of them. And I think Robbie was part of that group, actually, on that day. And they were just like so focused on making their way down safely that they didn't see my partner, John Todd, and I and two dogs standing off to the side until they were like right there, and then it was a sudden thing. So there is definitely the potential for cross purposes. And when there were many more vehicles traveling the road, of course, the likelihood of that goes up. Also, you know, not so much for groups who ride locally, they're very familiar with the roads, but people who are traveling the road for the first time may not have a good understanding of the speed that's required to stay in control, and may not anticipate a little kid on his bike pushing the limit of going out past his driveway. So I, I do see, I do see that it is somewhat of a public safety issue. And like Martha said in the petition for Campbell Hill Road, if there is an injury, of course, the homes that are closest will then be put into action for helping people, you know, there is cell reception there. But like I think one year, the director of the Putney School drove a 17-passenger school bus over the trail because that's what his GPS told him to do. And so then he got stuck, and, you know, it's more than just the motorbikes. It's pickup trucks who like to come through in mud season to see if they can rise to the challenge of making it through the mud. It's occasional ATV use. I don't know that we've ever seen more than one or two snowmobiles go through there. But, so it's, it's more than just recreational motorcycle riders as well.
Are there any vast trails nearby?
I'm sorry, any what?
Vast, you know, snowmobile, official snowmobile trails close by?
No, but there's a, you know, there's a whole intricate system of old roads up there that are beautiful for, you know, cross-country skiing and ATVs and, you know, what have you, just beautiful trails through the woods. So.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I guess one more thing I wanted to say is, we had a great conversation with Robbie trying to see about if there are other ways to address these concerns than designating non-motorized traffic. And one of the proposed ideas was putting a speed limit at the end of the road. And, you know, it's a good idea, except it falls to this question of enforcement. You know, like, you could say you can go five miles an hour, but, you know, who's, who's really going to be there to make sure it happens? So I think that's just...
What is, what is the speed limit on the regular part of the road?
35 miles an hour.
Thank you.
What's that?
Yep.
It was just too fast.
So we have two issues.
Yep, John, wait, who's talking?
Me, Craig.
Oh.
You're right. Class 4 and trails are two complete ones, so if we were going to go to our attorney, we need to make sure that those are too distinct. And when we did this local roads, when we did the study, everybody had a chance to come in and complain if that was what it's going to be. Our town has never set up a permit, permission places. I've seen it done where it says motorized vehicles are not allowed without a permit or permission to go down there. We've never done that, nor do I know we even have a legal right to do that. But it almost sounds like that's what you're looking for, is to say, if you, you know, if you go get a permit or permission to travel down there, you can, other than that. And it would scare people away because there'd be a sign saying, "Illegal to have motor vehicles on this trail without permission, dah, dah, dah." And I don't know if that's even legally possible to do, but I think we could ask.
Craig, I, I just want to say something. I've walked that trail and, several times, and I've always been amazed at how rickety it is in places. And, you know, it's not an easy trail to walk. It's a nice trail to walk. But I think that the idea of having it shared with groups of people because they're, they think it's a, it's a, it's a normal road, it isn't. It is not a normal road. And any of the, I think it's not as good as any of the, the trails that we have in use, you know, the, you know what I mean?
No.
The pinnacle.
Oh, I see what you mean. Okay, gotcha. Walking trail, hiking trails, got you.
Yeah, the pinnacle trails. I mean, they're, they're... I think it's, I mean, I think it's fine for walking, but it's definitely, definitely not shareable with motorcycles and any other kind of vehicles. I think we...
Well, the issue is it is legal now at this point.
Well, I think that, yeah, I mean, if nobody's, if they, nobody's said that it isn't, it is dangerous for them because if they think it's a real road, it isn't.
It might be interesting as part of your decision-making process to do a site visit. I mean, you're familiar with it, but it may help to look at the place in person and to take note of that spot at the top of the hill from Windmill Hill South going north. And then after you reach a plateau, there's a swampy bit, and you can see how people have had to move around the big puddle in the road and how that's widened the trail. And, you know, even, even this year, when things have been so remarkably dry, it still requires moving around the puddles. Thank you.
One question about your suggestion, Craig. A sign that says, "Only with permission of whom, though?" That's sort of the...
It shouldn't have permission. It should not be, there should not be vehicles on it.
Okay.
And, and, well, just one more thing to, to what Craig was saying. There are roads that have, that say, "No vehicles" on them, and they've been closed off, like the, there's one in Westminster West.
Yeah.
That it's more of a road, actually.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
That's all right. No, I'm just curious about this option, but...
And I'm not even saying for that option. It sounded like there was mixed feelings from the group that they didn't want to cut off the people that were local doing it.
Right, exactly.
I mean, it is, either you shut it off like what she says, or you don't. I don't ride motorcycles out there, and so it doesn't impact me personally, but it sounds like they were trying to come up with another choice than, than just cutting it off. And I was thinking, well, that'd be the only other way to do it.
Right, well, I'm hoping we can come up with some options. Chuck, why don't you come up and...
What the, what the town of Crafton has done is they have an outing club, and all their trails are open to everybody for hiking, horses, four-wheelers, whatever. You have to join the club, you have to pay to join the club to use their trails. You get a sticker or a lanyard with your number on it or whatever, and when you're out there and you're doing something stupid, they know. And everybody maintains the trails, so they stay maintained. And if you see somebody screwing up the trails, you stop them because it's going to hurt everybody. So that's, that's how they handle it.
That's 100% of what I was saying. They have groups, they have, the snowmobile guys have that same thing, too, where they'll come into the landowners that, "We'll maintain it, we'll protect it, and we'll keep out, and we'll be responsible for it."
They might be out on a snowmobile and run across somebody on a horse. So they're always expecting that around the next corner because it's the way it's set up.
And what was the origin of those trails? What they, did they make the trails, or were they...
They're just old cart roads, like what we've got.
Eagle trails?
What's that?
I mean, were they Class 4 roads?
Some of them are Class 4 roads, some of them are just old, old trails.
I mean, that, that sounds like an often the only one is then you would have to have an organization...
Well, that's what the gentleman was talking about, a club. That's where they have a club.
Right.
And it's, it's called an outing club, and everybody gets together, and they set up their own rules and however they did it. But they all seem to come together and make it work, so...
They actually collect fees, and then they use the fees to maintain the trails and look after them. Yeah, it's very popular in a lot of places, and that's why I said it wasn't, the town would be responsible, we would actually have to sign it over to a group or give them permission.
What's important about maintaining these trails is if there's ever a fire or something out in the woods, and they need to get out there, we need to have the roads accessible to a, to a degree. So, anyway, just an idea.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on.
I just, I just want to clarify. This is not a private trail. I think someone mentioned that. This isn't private. It's a town, it's, it's a legal trail. Our neighbors just happen to live along it. They don't own it. It is not on private property. It just happens to be their driveway, and so they maintain it because they have to. But it's only about...
Thirty yards.
About 30 yards. But the rest of it is, is this trail. And the people who sign this are asking that you classify it as non-motorized. And I apologize, but when I was looking at the statutes and various things, it seemed to be that we needed to go to the select board to ask about this. So I think you do have jurisdiction. I could be wrong.
No, I think we do.
But we are asking, we have many, we, we're all welcome to other opinions, but the people who sign this is asking that you classify it as non-motorized. And I respect other people's opinions, but if you're going to open this up to other organizations, I think you're kind of going on another trail.
Right. I don't think it would be another organization. I think you would be the organization.
And again, I will go back to, you should come out and look at the trail. You should walk the trail with us, and we can show you what the damage that has been done. And some of that I don't think you can repair. I mean, you can't put rocks back and build them up again. But it's, it's, I really think the erosion is going to cause some serious problems to the town. We already have problems with erosion with the stormwater, just because the road's the way it is. So I think you're just going to really add to it with this.
Let me, let me ask you one other question.
Certainly.
Get back to the public safety thing for me. You've been there how many years?
I'm a newbie. I've only been there 20 years.
So in that 20-year period of time, actually, let's just go back 10 years, a period of time.
Okay.
Would you state that the velocity or the number of people that are utilizing these trails on a monthly basis has grown, stayed the same, or diminished?
It has probably grown. The number of families on our road has grown. We've almost doubled over the last 20 years. It, it definitely increased during the pandemic because everybody came to go hiking, and they parked along our road and walked to the...
That could be an anomaly, though, right?
It is an anomaly, but the way things are going right now, it might be coming back.
We are, we are 31 years on the hill, and there's definitely been an increase in foot traffic, bicycle traffic, just all sorts of vehicle traffic, not just the trail, but the whole road.
Substantive increase? Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other comments? Come on up, yep.
So I just wanted to touch on a couple of things that, so I did have a conversation with Heather and John, and with Todd, actually, also. And we're aware of the problem. And, you know, from everything they say, yeah, it would be probably the easiest thing in the world just to close the road to motor traffic. But it not only impacts people from out of state, but it impacts all of us who ride here locally. And my, you know, intent to be here is to try to maybe propose alternative ways to preserve the trail and preserve, you know, integrity of not only the trail but of the community, and, you know, I mean, I live in West West... I live in West West. I know what it's like to want to live in, in, in our area. So with that in mind, again, I am in the process of creating a club or a, whatever you want to call it, of riders here who will maintain the trails. Because we have a lot of trails that we ride on that need a lot of work. And it's not just from us using them. It's from ATVs, it's from horses, it's from mountain bikes. All these trails get used. And it's not just motorcyclists who try to go around. Horses go around, bicyclists definitely go around, hikers go around the mud spots and makes braids through the woods and all that. It's, it's not just one group that causes the damage to the trail. And I understand that over the last month or so, maybe two months, there's been a huge increase in these adventure bikes coming through. But again, through the Back Country Discovery Routes, which is the organization that published it, they have now deleted that from their trail maps. And, you know, over the last, I've been here for 30-something years, riding for about 10 motorcycles, riding 30 on bicycles. And, you know, that trail has always been a problem. And I understand that it's probably worse now after these bikes have gone through, but it is not, not fixable. All trail is fixable. You can always do maintenance on the trail. There are plenty of people around here who know how to create trails and do good maintenance on them. In Vermont, there are over 50 motorcycle clubs already, everywhere except southern Vermont. And those clubs, like Mount Shower Club, the Conservation Cycle Club of Vermont in northern Vermont, all maintain their trails. And they do a fantastic job up there of keeping their trails open for everybody. And it just takes a little bit of time. And I'm the one that's going to be involved in it. I'm trying to get everyone else to get on board. And it's just going to take some, some time. And we'd be happy to, you know, take on Windmill Hill, Kimball Hill, whatever, as part of our mission, you know. So that's all.
Thank you. How big is your group?
Right now
Probably informal at this point, but maybe
It's informal. Right now, we have probably about 20 riders who, we, we have a regular meeting on Tuesday nights, a regular ride right now on Tuesday nights. And then we get together on the weekends to ride more. Or today, we rode in Bear Hill, which needs quite a bit of work also. And that's only the people that ride actively right now. But there's many, many others who just ride on by themselves once in a while, who I think would be interested in being part of the club. So I guess that's my
Thank you.
Try to find an alternative to just shutting it off completely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments? Come on up.
My name is John Todd, 31 years at the end of Windmill Hill Road South.
Todd, 31 years at the end of Windmill Hill Road South, 60,000 miles of motorcycling over two motorcycles. What's happening to that end of our road is an example of data grabbing. It is GPS information that's now available broadly. And you will get guide touring groups that look at these maps and say, BDR doesn't have a good solution here. They're not taking the road that's certainly far more adventurous. We offer a far more adventurous trail. We surely do. I would ask you to strongly consider visiting the rock ledge that's been discussed as a, a trail or a road. It's not. Please come, please take a look, and consider the idea of making this non-motorized. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you all. What do you think, board? Site visit?
That's all part of the procedure anyways. We always have to have a hearing at the site, do a site view, give everybody time enough on both sides so that, we need to warn it so the people who are concerned about, about wanting to have motorcycles have a chance in the people before we close it off. Like I said, yeah. And I assume we're still going to contact Larry to just make sure we got our legal rights to shut that off.
Yeah. So we'll contact our, our attorney. We'll schedule a site visit. It's your pleasure. Next couple of weeks. Is that possible? Doable? Can you arrange that, Russ?
I surely can.
And, and be thinking about any other options? Anyone has any other ideas, any other options maybe we can come up with, and we can discuss it more. All right. Anybody else? Sheldon, you have something you want to say? You look like you do.
No, I was, I was just contemplating, you know, a change, oh, sorry. I was just contemplating changing the designation to
Yeah.
To non-motorized vehicles. And you've got these two blocks of land on both sides of this trail that if somebody decides, gee, I think I'll build a house up here. And we've already closed it to mo, to non-motorized vehicles as a town. I'm not sure what the procedure would be for the town to open up this section of trail that we've already deemed non-motorized for somebody that wants to build a house on one side or the other of either of these trails. That's my only concern, just sitting here thinking about this.
That might be a question for Larry, one of the many questions for Larry.
It's not
You, you can't buy it? It's
A section of it is owned by Pinnacle.
Uh huh.
A section is owned by Dan Crocker, who has Sugar Bush, but he's given them a contract easement. It's not full of land. It won't, it won't be bought. It won't be sold.
Well, it could be. Mr. Crocker is, you know, not, if he died tomorrow and this Sugar Bush changed hands or whatever, and this could happen with either of these trails in question. The Pinnacle View or the Pinnacle Trail, I understand, that's, that's a block of land that basically isn't conservation now and can't be changed. But there is, this isn't, it's not all Pinnacle View land or Dan Crocker. There's other property involved in this.
Well, I would look into the easement that is consigned. There's an agreement between him and the Pinnacle, them to use that land while on the land.
In perpetuity.
So I don't know. Check the legality of that.
What about Kimball Hill? Does anyone know about that?
No, no, no one's going to go down there.
Oh, okay.
According to our question, you look into it. It just goes down and
Uh huh.
I really think that, not the truck. No one's going to go down there. I don't know why that's supposed to be.
Yeah.
Never tried.
Okay. Okay. It's a mystery. Okay. Anything else? So we'll go visit it. We'll contact our attorney. We'll consider other options and bring it up again. Thank you for coming. Yeah. Executive session for two personnel matters, executive session for contractual matter. Do you want a motion to go into executive session?
I'm moved. We go into executive session for two personnel matters under agency.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. We'll go into executive session. We'll move this to the end of the meeting, but all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nope. I mean, I didn't mean no. Okay. We'll do that after item 10.
Other business.
After item 10. Okay. The Waste, Waste Water District, I mean, the Wa, wait, where are we? OD. I thought we were doing two executive sessions in one motion. Okay, we'll do another one. We do. Okay. Thank you, Sheldon. Do we have a motion to go into executive session for contractual matter?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to go into executive session for contractual matter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We'll do that also after 10. Okay. Russ, the Waste District.
Wyndham Solid Waste
Thank you.
Management District came out with a summary of financials. It was very interesting. So I'm passing it along. Bottom line is, they've had a very good year. They had a $55,000 surplus. And a, a large contributor is the comp facility that they have created. And all of this is good news for our assessment and the services they provide for us. So it's just an FYI, and it was important enough to put it in, on the agenda for you to look at. If you have any questions?
Russ, I do. I mean, when we were looking at this, and we were talking about closing it down completely, and one of the things was, it was getting money from the solar panels, which really, they shouldn't count because they would still get that money if they closed down. So if I'm reading this right, they actually, without the solar panel, would have lost about $60,000.
That's correct. Yeah. It is, it is one municipality. And so all of their assets, just like Westminster, go into the same pool, and they all are accounted for. But yes, recycling, as we know, is costing now to get rid of. There's no money to be made there. And trash is trash. It's, it's still costing. So instead of having, you know, large payments, we are actually offsetting it with being frugal with our, with our units that, that they're creating, such as it's actually creating a revenue to offset the, the costs that we're exposed to.
But is there gold to actually break even without the solar panels someday?
No.
You're always
There is no way they're going to be able to do that. They, they can't charge enough to, to the individuals that utilize the facility. Sorry, I hope I'm talking loud enough.
My main concern, my main concern has always been the, as you all know, the stickers, which according to this raised $95,000, which more than offsets, depending on how selectively you want to be with this budget. We have a lot of people that come here and say they're good with numbers. The $95,000 obviously would offset both, that both Russell and Craig alluded to. My concern remains, and I did purchase a sticker this year.
This is the Wyndham Solid Waste
It's not the same place.
It is not?
It is not. This is Braden.
Okay, I do apologize. Then I'm, I'm sorry.
The borough facility that we are of.
Okay. And I apologize.
Oh, no problem. But along those lines, has there been any more discussion about kicking Westminster out of the Rockingham Transfer Station?
There is not any more discussion. Whereof.
Thank you.
So my concern was still, that remains a sliding scale. And going forward, it's the easiest mechanism to raise, without objection, for
Right.
Members of our town especially, who are now more and more reliant, correct me if I'm wrong, on that facility.
On the Rockingham facility?
Right.
Yes. And, and what do you mean more and more reliant? Because
Well, we've moved off to, now, am I reading the, I'm reading the right one here, right? The increase of
I see. Because they're, yeah.
Right. So
Throwing out more trash, guy.
Yeah. So the mechanism now for both composting and not putting wet trash in the, in the trash bin, you can take it there, which they also said the largest source of revenue, $366,850, are tipping fees charged for trash, CND, and food waste. That's why, I'm sorry if I read the wrong thing. It says here they had a budget surplus of $55,000. Am I looking at the, a different?
Now, that
This whole, whole summary is from the Wyndham Solid Waste in Braden.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have no information on the
From the Rockingham, no.
Fine. Okay. Thank you.
Well, the only thing theoretically, Rockingham still takes some of the stuff to this district to get rid of it, right?
I'm not sure.
Oh, really?
They're, they're higher, it's just like every
Do we know how many stickers Westminster residents have bought in Rockingham or not?
No, we do not.
We don't have any numbers for that?
I would like to know those numbers.
Just want to make sure that all Westminster citizens are being treated fairly and have going to get the same service and not continually get hiked every year, every other year.
Yeah.
That's all.
Thank you. Have we heard, have we heard any more about composting or throwing out organic waste? I know we had some discussion about that and
You're going to have to be more specific.
You know, obviously, you can't put any more of your
That's correct.
Yeah.
As of July 1st.
Right. And I know the people are saying, well, what am I going to do with it? And there are several options.
We're, we're handling probably four or five calls a week.
Yeah.
And giving them all the options. It's in the Gazette again this month coming up.
Okay.
To make sure that you realize how many options you have, which is quite a few.
Yeah.
And if you still just hit a wall, then call me. Because we are working out programs.
Thank you. Any, anything else on that? Well, let's move on to the Westminster FY20 Trash Recycling Year and Numbers. So this is for Westminster.
Because of conversations at the last meeting, I, I've been regularly keeping track of how many tons we have generated in trash and recycling from the contracts that we created this last time with Ruggiero. The first three years was, was our first contract, and the next two years are in the phase of, of the, the extension that we took over. I highlighted in red the highest amounts per month, per year, excuse me. And it's, it's interesting that they do not line up. You would think that January, February, December, you know, that it would all be relatively even, and it surely isn't. You can see on by that chart. And you can also see that COVID has increased our use of trash. People are home, they're generating trash at home, not just at work. So hence the, the exposure that we had in this last fiscal year of $11,000 of deficit, offset by revenues that came in. But it still showed that we were behind in it. So
Well, you can also see that over the last five years, it's, it, the average has increased every year. So
That, that's correct.
Russ, could the red, could the, the ones that are the highest, could that be the months that we had five Fridays? You know how he picks up every Friday? So some months, you're actually going to have an extra week in there with extra trash. So that's acceptable. I'm having a little, what's I did understand, so fiscal year 20, we're only halfway through it. So June
Fiscal year 20 just ended June 30. We're in fiscal year 21 right now.
So July on fiscal year 20 was really July of 2019?
That's correct.
Okay. That's what I wanted. It's kind of misleading to read it.
Yep.
Yeah. I'm not sure the month matters as much as the gradual increase in trash and in recycling. So. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. February 29th Town Meeting Minutes Approval. We have minutes that need to be approved. And I think Sheldon, did you want to, you need to sign those because you were the chair? Do you, what's that?
Do you want a motion on it or not?
Not, not if you're happy with the minutes.
I'm, I'm, I'm happy with it. I signed it.
Then we're done. Good. Thank you.
Did you get it?
Okay.
Yeah. Managers Report. Russ, please.
Just a few items. We are going to need a special select board meeting to set the tax rate. We just got the information today about the non-homestead tax We just got the information today about the non-homestead tax rate for the schools, but the tax rate for the homestead is still not set. So we're going to be in the same ballpark as we were last year by setting a happy medium type of rate so that taxpayers are not seeing such a flux of a dollar versus what we should be at, a $1.60 something. So at this point, I don't have all the information. It just came in, like I said, today. So in your packets, please look at this, the information for... I'd like to set a meeting tonight of, a week from today, at the Town Hall to set the tax rate. It'll only take a short time, but we have to do it before August 1st so that we can get the tax bills out.
So we'll have to send out two separate tax bills again this year?
Yes, we will, unfortunately.
Okay.
There is a slight, and I mean slight, possibility that we'll have the rate by then. But he told me that, who is the program manager, said that realistically it'd be mid-August like it was last year.
Okay. All right, so we want to have a meeting, short meeting, next Wednesday. Is that possible? One will be here, okay.
What time?
6:30, the usual? Yeah, 6:30.
6:30?
6:30.
At the Town Hall in...
Are you comfortable with meeting at the Town Hall?
We can have it outside if it's nice, and if it isn't, then we'll just spread out in there.
Okay.
So 6:30 on the 29th, next Wednesday.
The interim tax rate, right. Thank you.
The audit is scheduled for June 30th and 31st. Fuel bids went out last week and are due on August 7th. And in your packet, you have the delinquent tax updates.
The audit is June?
I'm sorry, did I say June?
Yes.
Sorry, July 30th and 31st. That's it? Any questions on any of that? Is it possible, probably, sorry? Got to press it again, Sheldon.
Just hold your finger on it, yeah.
It's a technical case. Considering the cost, is it possible that we send out the tax rate as we normally do and once we get this and basically change it the next time around rather than doing all the mailings and changing this, or does it become a paperwork nightmare?
That's exactly what we did last year. We set the rate at a best guess, very close, so that there wouldn't be such a discrepancy.
Yep.
And then for the last bill, which is due in February, we had the right numbers. We created a new tax bill, sent it in a different color. Yes, last year it was yellow to make sure that people realized that we had it. And we're going to end up doing exactly the same thing. There's nothing that we can do to... For Naglin, I'll ask Ally to weigh in.
By statute, if you change, when we get the correct tax... By statute, when we get the tax rate settled where it's supposed to be, we have to send out revised tax bills. So I think what you're trying to say is, can't we just wait till the next year and then give people credit? Is that what you mean? You can't do that.
Okay. I was just curious about it.
Okay. Are we good on the Managers Report? Boards and Commissions.
In your packet, you have a letter from Russ Lazaric. He's sitting right behind me. He's in the Town's Planning Commission. He would like to say a few words. He's here.
Sure, thanks. I actually attended the Planning Board meeting yesterday. Definitely very interesting work that they're doing. Moving here just a year ago, interested in seeing how to, you know, help bring other people to the town as well. So I think I can bring some good insight. I think some of the people on there have been here quite a few years, so they have one view and get a different view of, you know, how to help bring in more people.
Great.
Definitely interested in helping out.
Thank you.
I can tell you that we've already given him tasks. I make a motion to appoint Russ Lazaric to the Westminster Planning Commission.
I'll second.
They moved and seconded to appoint...
Who seconded?
Raise your hand. Who wants to be the second?
I don't care.
Okay. Craig seconded it.
Okay.
Is there terms on this? Remember, we go through this every time?
Oh, right, the term. What is the term?
Is he taking the place of somebody, or is he filling in a term?
Two-year term, three-year term?
He is actually filling the vacant spot that we have lost from probably three or four years ago, so I would have to check the term.
Okay. Make sure he gets a long one.
Yeah.
32 years, I think is the...
Moved and seconded to appoint Russ Lazaric to the Planning Commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You're in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much. Anything else on Boards and Commissions?
Nothing.
Okay, any other business?
We do have some other business. In your packet, you have the response from Nader, which is our representative, that Susan requested, so I'll let her talk about it.
Sheldon asked me to follow up on the lingering emergency management issue, which has not been settled to our satisfaction. The lack of, I don't know what you would say, the lack of communication. That's a nice way of putting it, during the situation, which is now, what, a year and a half ago when we had an armed person terrorizing the neighborhoods. So I did ask Mike Maracki, who passed me on to Nader Hashim, and I think I gave you that. Do you want me to read it?
It's in the packet, but yes, if you would, to the public.
Sheldon will have to because I gave him my... Would you read it, Sheldon? You can just read, oh, never mind, I can, if you want. This is from Nader Hashim, Representative. Hi Susan, I spoke with Lieutenant French, and he mentioned that he had spoken with Rich Cogliano from Vermont Emergency Management, Russ Hodgkins, the Town Manager, a representative from the Fire Department, the school, and the sheriff to have a debriefing about the incident. He also mentioned that he would work on the communication and read the miscommunication between dispatch and the town. He said he was confident that if there was a future incident, it would be communicated differently and more effectively. He also said he would speak with the Town Manager on December 2nd, 2019, and that he had spoken to him the previous week, and no additional concerns had been raised. I had assumed that Lieutenant French would provide an update during the conversation in December. But if there's still information missing, I can reach out to him again and see what else he can do. What else would you like done, Sheldon?
Nothing, I guess. I'm very disappointed with the response of the emergency management, I think, as much as anything. We spent all this time to get all the towns in the state on board with this emergency management program, and this is one of those situations where it didn't work. And it doesn't seem like they're very seriously taking the point that it didn't work. And it doesn't, it also would appear that they're not going to do anything more than what they've done, which is, I'm very disappointed in. But that seems to be where they're headed, so... I guess I'm fine with it.
I'm not sure what else we can do besides...
You can send them a letter and say that, you know...
That we're disappointed with them?
Yeah.
But maybe an official letter would be...
Well, you know what's disappointing? He doesn't explain how they would keep this from happening again. There's no ABC. Next time, A is going to happen, B is going to happen, so therefore it won't happen. It just says, "Oh, we looked into it and we're all set." Just, I agree with Sheldon. It doesn't make you feel like they really fixed anything.
We also had an issue up our road. And, you know, they parked three cars down at the bottom of the hill and thinking that the person who was acting up would go down. Well, they didn't go down. And we never saw the police that night. And they were called, you know, several times, and required the person who was involved to come to them. I mean, it's really a very strange kind of thing.
There's crime there in Westminster West, I'll tell you. Contrary to...
Your dog acting up.
My little dog was acting up.
Yeah, dog acting up. Okay, well, maybe we should... Okay, date of the next meeting is...
Susan?
Yes.
Nate Stoddard, we're still under other business?
Yes.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I guess first, can I find out if there's something we're doing wrong to connect to the meeting? We weren't able to connect. The link in the email did not work. It just goes, and it says that the host has another meeting in progress. I filed a phone number directly for the New York area, and it goes, and it says that the meeting hasn't started yet. Please wait or call back. If I log into Zoom under my personal account and enter directly the security code number, it goes to the same thing and says, "Host has another meeting in progress." So when I finally did get on, because I texted Russ and something happened on your end and it came on, I noticed there was somebody else joined via Zoom. So I'm just curious how they were able to get on and we were not. Is it something I'm doing wrong, or is there something on your end? What happened again today?
Yep, hold on.
I don't know what's going on. She was able to get on. So I don't know if it was because the waiting room was enabled. There's some bug in Zoom that I'm just kind of... This is Alex from Fact TV, by the way.
Yes. So Alex...
Actually, the only thing that I can do, because there's bugs that happen with other software, and, you know, they don't come up, and I didn't see anything on the forum, or maybe it's because I have the waiting room enabled. I have no idea. I'm trying to figure it out.
So I thought we'd test it next week.
No, 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 no. Because the link's going to go bad. So the only thing that I can do, and I'm going to tell you what we're going to do, is the next link that we have, I'm not going to create a link and schedule a meeting ahead of time because the links obviously go bad or something happens, is Russ will put down, give you the link to our Facebook page, and as soon as I get that Zoom meeting up, I'm going to post, you know, at 6:15 just prior to the meeting, I'm going to post that meeting up on our Facebook page because that's how you were able to get through, finally, right? Because I copied your invite from the open meeting that was currently going, and then you were able to get through. So I don't know what, I have to figure out what's going on. Maybe it was because the waiting room was on. I don't really want to, like, risk it on that. But if I just post the meeting link, as soon as I get the computer up and start that meeting up on our Facebook page, and then you have the link directly to our Facebook page, that'd probably be the most direct way to do it, until I figure out what's going on.
Okay, well, thanks for trying. I'm not sure really what's going on either because I join Zoom meetings multiple times a month, and I have links to my next board meeting that I'm involved with, which is the beginning of next month already, and that goes right on every time.
Yeah, I don't know if it's something in our settings. I really don't. I have to check it out. I don't know if it's because they have waiting room enabled. I don't know what setting is causing this problem. I haven't figured it out yet. I'll become a Zoom expert by the time I'm done, but it's going to require me additional couple hours to troubleshoot an issue. You know, it's really, it's not my main purview, you know. So the only thing I can do is literally just either give me your email, and I'm going to post that link up on our Facebook page as soon as possible. And if I have your email, then I can hit your invite and get you on right away without having the same problem. And hopefully, maybe by the next meeting, I can figure it out, but...
All right, well, I appreciate that. And the bigger question is, is I don't understand why the town's just not doing your own Zoom account. I mean, I'll donate you the $14.95 that it costs.
I'm not sure that would solve the problem because we don't have a dedicated IT person. But my question too is, would it be, if Nate's the only person, it may not be the only person who can't get on, so, you know, on the agenda, at the top of the agenda, if we say, go to the Facebook page?
Yeah, I'm going to say, I'll send you the direct link to our Fact TV Facebook page so people can click on that and just let them know it's 6:15. The meeting's going to be open on Zoom, and there's going to be a link posted up on the Facebook page. That's the only way I can guarantee, or guarantee the link's not changing. I don't know what's going on.
Yeah.
And maybe it's the waiting room. Maybe there's a bug in wait. I just disabled it. So we might not have this problem. But that's the only way I can guarantee people getting through right now, until I figure it out.
Okay.
So that's...
Go ahead, sorry.
So can I just ask, because I came in, you know, once it got opened, we were able to join, it was late. Can I get a review of the only three things that I wanted to hear to begin with? And that's the three items on their unfinished business?
Well, that'll be short because construction of Henwood Hill, we had no updated information. North Westminster Community House, we had no updated information. And I believe the Savage gravel pit, we're going to be, Russ, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to take more borings with different equipment tomorrow?
That's correct.
Yes. Did I say that right?
That's correct.
Yeah. So we got through those pretty quickly.
All right. Was there an indication of what happened with the first borings? Or that's not out for information?
We hit cobblestones, you know, large stones, and the unit that he was drilling with wouldn't press them to the side. So we are now getting a solid drill bit to get to the depth we need to give us a full answer to the product depth.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then is there a possibility that when you come out of executive session, there'll be decisions being made, so we should hang around, or how's that going to work?
I expect there will be decisions being made, yes. So how will this work, Alec? Well...
And if you guys, are you able to go into another room?
Can we go into the Fire Department?
They're using that.
Okay. Can you...
I mean, I'll shut everything off and I'll put people in a waiting room.
Yeah, we can do that, but then you two, three, have to withstand the thunder and lightning while you're waiting for executive session.
While you figure that out, you also have to, to go into executive session, you have to say who you're going to invite.
Yes, yes. We're inviting, well, for the first personnel matter, who are we inviting for that, Russ? The second one, we're inviting you, but Ally. So for the first executive session, we're inviting Ally Bigwood. For the second one, we're inviting Russ Hodgkins.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. I don't know how we're going to do this. Is there, there's room in back. What's happening?
Is nobody in there? All right, let's go in there.
So it looks like we can go into the Fire Department Hall.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, they're just going to go into another...
All right, they're just going to go into another room.
Yeah.
They're going to get you, so we're going to stay here.
Came out of executive session at 8:36 with no decisions made.
And I'm going to sit here.
Been moved and seconded, that we adjourn the meeting, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? We adjourned. Thank you.